If we have to hire more instructors to meet diversification, but we really most likely will be downsizing. With our enrollment, how would that pan out?
I think trustee Dorn, they would ask for a percentage of a total full-time faculty. And not an absolute number because it's going to differ by institution. And that's all our best guess as of this morning.
So and then I heard sort of two scenarios on the upcoming budget, a rose somewhat of a rosy one and then somewhat of a not so rosy. What's our plan in moving forward to go in between?
Yeah, Julia and I have taken that position over the last few years to be conservative. And if money comes our way, then it just, then it's great. We can put it in the fund balance or some other high need areas. But I would rather budget in a very conservative way. So that we're not caught unawares like other institutions have in the past.
Yeah, I think we should, I mean, given the chancellor's office, they recommend what 17% reserves? Or two months expenditures?
Yes.
And you know, we got ways to go, but yeah, it's, it's better to be prudent and conservative than. Under this environment.
And I'm curious, is there any discussion of what the recall will affect if he is recalled? In March, what the effect would be on all the budget or it will be, he'll still be governor and pass it?
We have not, Julie, I don't, the CEOs have not talked about that and we don't, we don't touch that from a political standpoint, but.
Well, no, I understand, but, but I mean, if what I was reading this morning was that it's probably very likely there will at least be a recall election. And I'm just wondering where, where does that leave us? How do, I mean, if that were to happen, how would that affect us? If at all?
If the state's budget is approved in June or July per their timetable. And he's recalled after that point, we're fine for 21, 22.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. It's. I agree with as, as we have been on the conservative approach budget wise. For all the reasons that we all already know. I saw a headline in an article that predicted that California's budget would be back to pre-pandemic level by this summer. And I thought, well, whoa. I'm not sure we want to count on that.
I read that same thing, Vice President Matthews.
Yeah. So. Trustee Dorn, trustee Kupini, are there any other questions that you have at this time? Of our VP?
Oh, on the distance education, if we grow that or whatever, is that possible? On employment, because I know other, other colleges do this. To employ people out of the area? That do distance or not?
Yes. It is possible and, and we are also going to do the same thing.
Okay.
And to write trustee Kupini, there are many, many colleges. Who are doing it now and there's, they're going, and that's just going to accelerate. As everyone starts growing in DE and we don't have enough faculty at our colleges who are trained on BE.
Because hypothetically, if you, I mean. You know, we all want local dollars here, but hypothetically, if you get employment from low cost areas. It might save us on the salary end of it.
No, because our salaries are contractual, so whoever's teaching, if they're teaching from Humboldt or Tahiti, they're going to get the same salary.
Okay, okay.
But that would increase our chances for diversity.
True.
Yeah, that's, that's very true.
The Federal Reserve came out with a study I was reading this morning. I just, I just glanced over it. On this diversity and equity thing, it has caused, caused, cost GDP, I mean, trillions of dollars over the years. And the projections are pretty crazy, you know, I don't know how it was done or whatever. I didn't read really detail, I just skimmed over it, but that, I read that this morning.
Wow.
Okay. Anything else with our budget proposal discussion this morning? I know the board will be hearing information also, the full board, that is. So Vice President Morrison, thank you for all the materials and your summary and meeting with us this morning. I think we'll stay tuned. So to speak. Okay, so.
So what do we do with that? Trustee Matthews, what do we do as a committee with that information? We just sort of take it in?
Yes, it's our discussion, but preliminary to this full discussion when it's on the board's agenda. When it's on the full board's agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so I see. Mr. Curry has been able to join us and we're going to move to item 2.2 on our agenda. Which is to. Accept the audit report and. So we, we have the audit report and we welcome you, Mr. Curry. And. I look forward to your presentation to us about the audit report. And a chance for us to ask questions.
Hi, everybody. How you doing?
Good morning. Thank you.
So yeah, I'll just start out introducing myself. I'm Stephen Curry. I'm a senior audit manager with the firm. I actually was one of the ones in charge on doing this audit this year. I guess I wanted to start out first and thank Julia and Erica and their team for, you know, it's been kind of a, definitely a different year for, at least on our side, for doing an audit. We never, I don't think anybody ever expected to have a remote audit. But it went really well. We use the portal, our portal is an online portal where we can put all of our requests through. It's all, everything's safe, secure, and we did a lot of our work through there. And yeah, they were able to get us everything that we needed to get this audit taken care of. So thank you to both of them for doing that during these times. I'll start it out, maybe we can just kind of go over the independent auditors' report, which is on page one of the document or on PDF page four. Would you rather go by PDF page or report page?
That's up to Cynthia, what's easiest for her here? To post it for us. I think we're on the right place.
Yep, you're right there. Exactly. So that is our independent auditors' report. That is our report over the financial statement. So we state that we have audited the financial statements. We state management's responsibility for that is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation. We assist in preparing the financial statements and we express our opinion. And on the next page, essentially what we're saying is we have presented an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion at our disposal. So we said, we went through the financial statements, we got support for the items, nothing was of concern that needed any large adjustments. Everything was under a materiality threshold that's established. And so we were able to give our highest opinion. We're in the next few pages, it's just the management discussion analysis, just kind of a summary of the financial statement. So you can kind of see year over year change. A lot of the big items for districts is kind of, is the pensions and the OPEB. Which really drives a lot of our conversion entries. So maybe one thing we can do is I have both reports pulled up. I'll just kind of give you some numbers of some comparisons. We'll shoot to page, to the employee retirement system, which is on PDF page 31 or report page 27. There you go. Yeah, right there. Where it says note, note eight, employee retirement systems. Just one thing to kind of point out, maybe we'll go through is this drives a lot of the district's financial statements nowadays with, with regards to like conversion entries. You know, you can get the fund information from the district, but there's a lot of information that goes into that that spits out that final financial statement. One of them is this net pension liability. This is something that's done at the state level. For Calsters and Calpers, the district really doesn't have a whole lot of what they can do to lower this. At the moment, if target earnings aren't made by the state or they are made, that'll drive whether or not it went up or down. Last year, the ending net pension liability was 33.93 million. This year is 35.5 million. Most of that has to do with just the overall pension liability, which is in the billions has gone up.
That's just for redwoods?
Yes, correct. That's just your share. And then if we move forward, maybe one thing, just to point out, on PDF page 31 or page 35, report page 31. Just to kind of put it in perspective. A lot of this is driven off of the earnings. So at the bottom of that page right there, you'll see the discount rate. They're, they're using a 7.1% discount rate and that's how you get for, for STIRS, that's how you get to 17.5 of that 30, 35 million. And as you can see, if they miss their target earnings, it could be a big jump, essentially. The pension liability can go from, you know, 17.5 to 26, or if they do better, you can see it decreases significantly also. So really just a lot of it shows the volatility that's in these pensions.
Is it a reality to expect a 7.1% return?
Um, I would say. Yes, they've stuck with this percentage now for actually some years. So they're, they're making, there hasn't been a big shift in there. A part of it has been there, there was those SB 90 contributions, especially for STIRS in the past few years where the state was contributing additional money to there, which was helping with that.
Do you know, do you know how, how, what percentage of these pensions have to be invested in bonds, government debt?
So right above is kind of how, is what they're doing at the plan level. You can kind of see right there, their investment, their long-term. So they have their, how they're doing the global equity fixed income. So it looks like the majority of it's in global equity accounts, 47%. Of the allocation. And that's just something I don't think you as a district really have much say in what they're investing that money into.
No.
Yeah. And then just maybe on, just to shoot forward on PDF page 39. Or report page 35, you can kind of see the same thing for the purse side of it. This is for the Calpers retirement. And then maybe if we just jump forward again to page 36, PDF page 40. This is kind of your OPEB. These numbers. Come from an actuarial study. They're usually just like the pensions, they're actually a year behind. So when we're reporting, we're reporting for measurement date, 30th of 2019, even though we're giving you financial statements on June 30th, 2020. It's very typical, the Calpers, Calsters have always been a year behind. For the OPEB, it really just depends. Most districts will also follow that same one year behind. Some districts are on a current measurement date, but I, every other year you have to get a new study and this, and then every year after that's a roll forward study. So we just go to the next page, just a little bit of information about, or sorry, go two more pages. Got ahead of myself there. That right there, exactly. So as you can see, um, just kind of the difference. It, you know, it actually, which is good, it went down. It didn't go down a lot, but it went down by 452,000. So you can kind of see all the different inputs that happened from the actuarial level. All this information comes from that annual report that we are provided. Districts went down for that current year and then maybe the last few things to kind of jump on on the report is if we go to the. Required supplementary information on page 40, PDF page 46, report page 41. We provide a summary. So this one is the OPEB. So you can kind of see the changes year over year. So you can see in 2018, that liability was at 6.3. So it has been steadily coming down, pretty good amount each year. Um, and then the district doesn't have a fiduciary net position. A lot of districts open up near revocable trust where they put money in there to lower that liability. Usually you'll see a lot of that for districts that have large OPEBs and they have, you know, tens of millions of dollars in liabilities. That they'll open up an irrevocable trust and they'll set aside money every year to help manage that. Your district's doing a good job with managing it without having to have that. The next page after that is just kind of a required schedule, just essentially saying, here's the contributions, the actuarial. As you can see on that first line says, per the actuary study, they say, this is how much they recommend every year to help with that liability. Your district has been pretty good in going above and beyond that. The next page after that, sorry, has a lot of information. Probably next year we'll be pushing this to a second page. Essentially, we're working our way up to a 10-year schedule. And this is just a historical showing you the district's proportionate share for Calpers and Calsters. You can kind of see how that fluctuates year over year, but I, for, for you guys, if you look at it, you see like, oh, how come our liability is going up? But yet our percentage share is going down. It's just unfortunate that the overall liability for Calsters has went up significantly. And then the page after that, kind of the same thing, just has the, the contributions. Just showing you kind of the district's statutory required contributions. And then I'm going to jump forward to our other opinions, which begins on PDF page 64. Or report page 57. So this, this is our independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. So essentially saying, we've looked at the financial statements in the first opinion and gave you an unmodified opinion. In addition, we're also required to look at internal controls. So we look at internal controls over cash disbursement, payroll, HR, cash receipts, things like that. So not just that we're looking at what is the final balance, running some analytics on our end and saying, oh, the balances look good. We also are looking detailed into, on a sample basis, into expenditures and things like that, where we pull samples. We look at supporting documentation to make sure if this expenditure, does that check amount write up? Was that amount approved? Does, does it follow through the district's controls over that? Um, and we issued for that an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level opinion. We had no findings related to that. The next opinion, which is on the next page, or two, two more pages, sorry. This is our independent auditors' report on compliance for each major federal program. So what this is, is we also, in addition to doing the financial audit, we have state and federal compliance audits that we do. This is the, the federal side of the audit, federal compliance, which every year, one of them is student financial aid that we look at. We look at a lot of the student eligibility over the Pell program, direct loans, SEOG and all of those. And essentially we're issuing our opinion on that also. Um, same thing, we issued an unmodified opinion with that for you guys, which is on the next page. Just essentially stating that we did have no, no findings that came up with that, that we thought would have to change our opinion. So this year we did test, we had the one extra program in addition. We had the CARES Act, which. We started earlier in the year, but really they actually didn't provide us the guidance for testing until the very end of December. It was, they issued the compliance supplement in August with an addendum at the very bottom that says the addendum would be released in the fall. And that would cover the testing over the CARES Act. Um, they finally did issue it right late December. So we, one of the reasons why too, a lot of the audits got pushed back this year is nobody could file before then. Typically the audits would be due a little bit earlier than that, but everybody had to wait for those to come out. So those are the two programs. And then the next page. This is our independent auditors' report on state compliance. So we also have our state portion of the audit. This is all done from the chancellor's office. Every year they release the, the C DAM, which is the contracted district audit manual. And they list a list of programs that they want us to audit every year. There really was no changes. The biggest changes was just the naming of the programs this year. Um, they just, they changed a lot of it, like the student center funding formula, instead of calling it before the, like, just the regular portionment. So they changed that up a little bit, but still required the exact same procedures. We're looking at weekly, daily. Type of procedures. We're looking at the alternative method of accounting and then we look at positive attendance, things like that. Um, we did issue an unmodified opinion also on that. So we had no findings. And then if you shoot over two pages. That's just a summary. So that just essentially took those three opinions and just listed them out. Financial statement opinion, unmodified. You see federal awards, unmodified, and same with state awards. And then we listed out the two, the two programs. And then really the pages after that is just showing that there was no findings for the current year.
So Steve, how much, like on these government grants and, and student aid and even accounts payable and all that stuff? What, what percentage do you audit? I mean, yeah, the sample, I should say.
So for, let me just, I guess I'll start out with like the, the first opinion, the control testing. You have to test 25 samples essentially, and that'll give you the 95% confidence interval. Um, so, but for federal compliance, for the student financial aid, we'll do 40 selections over that. So we'll get 40 students across all those programs to do a dual purpose test and look over that. And then for stuff like financial statements, there is no sample size. The sample size is based off of a materiality level. So we have a planning materiality, a performance materiality, and we look at, we look at different areas in the financial statements that are over the performance materiality. And then from there, we'll pull selections and we have a lower threshold where we bring it down to a thing that's called the individually significant items. And we'll get samples and just look at stuff that's over ISI, because essentially what the guidance in the framework says. If you test the items over ISI, you should be able to comfortably state that everything else under ISI, if added up, wouldn't be enough to be over materiality and cause any changes to the users of the financial statements.
Okay. And then on, on the students, how, like with their programs and loans and such? How, you say you pick out like 40 random? How are they picked?
We, so when we pick in the students, we look at kind of the size of the program. So granted, your larger programs, which I believe is going to be for you, like Pell, Pell was 7.8 million of the 10.2 million. So if we had our sample of 40, you know, that percentage is going to be higher that we're going to look at Pell students. And then we get a lot of the documents to look at their student eligibility, how much they were paid. Just to make sure that they were awarded. We get their ICERS and we're looking at their EFC and their total amount that they needed, make sure they have that. A lot of the ICE information gives us all the eligibility stuff to make sure that they've, you know, they've registered selective service, make sure they don't have any. Debt on any of their loans, that they're not in default on anything like that. We're looking at all that information. Um, stuff like direct loans, we're going to be looking at whether or not like for every disbursement date, if there's letters sent out to let the students know. You've asked for all this money, you don't actually have to take this money, you can reduce that a portion, or you can cancel all of that disbursement and things like that. Make sure the communication is taken care of.
Thank you.
So that's, that's what we have. That's, that's our opinions and that's, yeah, overall, it was a very good audit year. It had some challenges with working with the portal, but I think we definitely overcame those challenges. And definitely want to thank the district again for helping out and working with us to get through this remote audit. And it was definitely a, a different time, that's for sure. Hopefully in the future years.
Can we ask for questions?
Yes.
Can we ask our questions?
Sure. Go ahead.
So I had a question. On page 21, you have the actual report, page 21. You talk, you list the accounts receivable. And I would like, what, how is the foundation have $27,000 in accounts receivable? What makes that up? And, and I don't know if I should be asking you that, or if I should ask at the board level. And then I believe it was 1.2 for the college in accounts receivable. What makes up that?
So, um, let's, I guess there, there's details on that information. It looks like a lot of it was less, different types of tuition and fees for the foundation. For the district, we had tuition and fees that were AR, so a lot of that, that's typical, federal grants and contracts. So the district may have spent for federal grants and state grants, a lot of the time the district spends more than what they've received back. Especially for years like this where it'll get a little bit higher because a lot of, especially with the. Places closing, grants and stuff, money had been remitted back. The district has spent the funds, but are still there to receive those funds and wait for them. So that's what gets the AR set up for those.
So we actually don't know what makes up those.
So if you went to page, you can get some of it. So on page 24 of the report is kind of a summary. Those will be in the notes. Oh, sorry, PDF page 28, sorry. So a lot of that's the summary right there. And then. That information, if you even want some more detailed information, it'll come from the district's trial balance. But like, for instance, you could go to report page 49. Or report page 55 and it lists out some of those, some of those state contracts, that's the state schedule. And you'd be able to see kind of a breakout between PDF page 55, sorry. You can see a lot of the programs, you can see where, you know, cash received versus how much was expended. I know this just counts for a small portion of it. This is just what's required for that schedule, but various things like that. And then you add in the federal side and then the student, student tuition.
A big chunk of the account receivable as well. And if you go back to page 28 of the PDF page 28. It's a $3.4 million figure and that's for our capital projects. That's how much that we expended and we put in claims for, but had not received as of June 30th, 2020.
So Vice President Morrison, so the 27,000 for, for the foundation, do you know what that's for? That was the one that really surprised me.
Um, sometimes, this is what I've seen and I can't say specifically, this is what that 7,000 is. But with how the accounting is set up, when they give a distribution to students, it's a little bit counterintuitive. And sometimes it'll hit accounts receivable. That's just what I've seen in some instances. Again, I don't know if that's what's going on here.
Okay. And, and I guess the basis, the real. Sort of the real crux of my question was, is this accounts receivable on tuition? You know, back several years ago, we had, you know, quite the issue.
No, no, not on the foundation side.
Million for part of that, or what about on the, the college side? The one point.
Yes, would be tuition and fees. Carried over.
And so, and so at some point we write that off.
Yes.
Okay, that was it. So, and if somebody could explain to me on page 20, we talk about the pool of investment at the county office with our cash. And that when you create the spreadsheet of the value, the assets of the college, it's not based, the way I read your report, it's not based on the actual cash. It's based on a formula of the pool of the money? I, am I reading that wrong or how does that work?
Well, it'd be accounts receivable would be included in that.
No, what Tracy, this was for the, when they actually do the, what the assets of the college. And I, it talks about the pool of investment and I was wondering, what does that mean?
So a lot of the, I think, are we talking about the cash in county? So a lot of. So a lot of the, I think, are we talking about the cash in county? So a lot of the, a lot of the cash is tell that the cash in county and the county provides will get reports from them, essentially says like, here's all the different organizations that are in this pool. Here's the market value versus the book value essentially. And that's, that's what it's, I think it's talking about is saying that depending on the year over year, um, the market value would be most likely higher than the book value.
So if we have, let's say five million in the county coffers, that might be worth, on the spreadsheet's five point one.
Yeah. And that's all from the county auditor controllers website. They'll, they post those, uh, monthly reports.
Okay.
We grab that information.
I mean, that, I, I just thought if you had cash in the bank, you, you know, if you're filling out a bank loan, if you have five million in the bank, you put down five million. And reading this, it was like, it could vary, it could vary based on the county.
Yes. Yeah. So it's just a disclosure saying that there is a fair market value. Most of the time it's immaterial. Most districts don't book that. There is some, some years where it becomes pretty large number and you'll see districts will, will record a fair market value adjustment. But I mean, that, that's something that's constantly changing too. It's based off of all their, they have so many different investment types and the weighted averages for each one of those that is continually changing. So when one comes due on a maturity, then there's new ones that are starting. So it's always, it's always changing essentially.
So actually we could be, if we have five million, it could be really only worth four point seven.
It could, yeah. I would say right now, probably not, just because it seems like everything's going up. But, uh, yes, there could be times, yeah, where it goes down, definitely.
And then I just have one last question. On page ten, at the last sentence of page ten of the actual report. As a result, the district is in position to capitalize on opportunities. What if there isn't a reversal of the student enrollment? I mean, are we, should we still be doing this? I mean, the way I, I thought your sentence was pretty interesting.
Go ahead, Steve. I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just gonna, I don't know, Julia, do you want me to defer that one to you or? That's for the economics factors portion.
Yeah, that, that's language that I provided and I don't know President Flamer if you wanted to speak to this.
I most certainly can if you wish me to.
Sure.
This, this goes back to the conversation that we had regarding servitas before. Is that although, yes, enrollment's going down, however, with, with new dorms coming on, on site, we will be able to attract more students to the institution. And this is what, but that, what that, that's what this sentence is referring to, is that we have to put a place to boost our enrollment.
No, I mean, I think the, I mean, I think that we're getting, we're getting poised for being in a good position if we get an increase. But boy, if we don't, then.
Yeah, no, I, you, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, uh, Richard. I mean, we're, we're in uncharted territory. I mean, with this COVID thing, how many of those, uh, students that never went, are they coming back? And, and yeah, it, it's kind of scary. I, I totally agree. I mean, it's uncharted. And then, you know, me, I'm looking at that, those unfunded liabilities, rise the thirty-five million. A few years ago, it was seventeen million and, um, the stock market's only gone crazy. And, and I know this is out of our control, but it still affects our employees.
Well, and seriously, the other thing, I mean, I think it's at the board financial report about the, the drop in student enrollment by such a percentage, should we be looking at cutting our budget by that percentage?
Yeah.
No.
We have with the layoffs.
Well, we, we have worked our, our, the way that we have as, as best of all to anticipate what, what the state's going to do based on drop of enrollment. What, what the conversation right now is, is whether the held, held, the hold harmless provision will stay intact or will be extended to give all colleges in, in California, a stair stepping opportunity to go down. Uh, because of, if we all had to cut our budget by, by what our enrollment declines are, some schools would be dropping their, their apportionment by sixty percent. And it's just impossible.
Well, I mean, and I, you just, from a business standpoint.
Yeah, absolutely. And what, what we're trying to do is take a look at this from a business standpoint. Is where, if we have to cut, which we do, where can we cut on a strategic level? That's why we put a syrup on the board's approval today. Is so that we can actually plan for, uh, cutting down our personnel costs to match our decrease of.
Right. And what you did, I mean, what we did or you, you provided and endorsed. And, and Julia has been real clear on the whole harmless, I think, either last board meeting or the board meeting before that.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about it at every opportunity, Trustee Dorn.
Right. Well, no, I mean, I think, you know, we have a great audit report and it looks excellent, but what, what, what do we have next year?
That's a good, that's a good question.
You know, I, I would just like to comment that my take on, on that last paragraph on, on, um, page ten was I, I was looking at the fact that, um, some absolutely wonderful new projects, creative arts building, which I think is very exciting and the, the, the whole PE business, the resource center as well as the dorms, that all of these are an investment, clearly. But I think they're an investment that can pay off in terms of, uh, helping our enrollment. It won't answer the enrollment question. But when you have excellent facilities and as well as good programs, that's, you know, that's how you're going to attract those students. And for us not to be an old, crummy, seismically liable buildings, uh, for, for, you know, in which to run good programs, we're, we're in so much better position with these. And I thought that, that all of that was speaking to, you know, helping with our enrollment.
No, I agree. I just, it just gave me pause.
Yeah.
To really ponder what happens if.
Right. Um, so do we have any other, uh, questions for, um, uh, for our auditor at the moment? No?
No.
Okay, so then what we need is a motion that we accept the audit report, that our committee accept the audit report and that we make a recommendation to the full board that they accept the audit report.
Don't move.
Vice President Matthews, if, if I can, um,
Yes.
Jump in, is that, that this, that the audit committee is approving the audit?
Okay.
And, and the full board will accept it in March.
Okay, so our motion then.
I made that motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll suck at it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded that the board approved the audit report and recommend to the full board that, that the committee approved the audit report and recommend to the full board that they accept the audit report. Cynthia, could you poll the board, the committee, please?
Cynthia, you still with us?
Cynthia? Richard Dorn?
Yes.
Tracy Copini?
Yes.
Carol Matthews?
Yes. Okay, so we have, um, approved that motion. Thank you. So this will, uh, then appear on the March full board of trustees agenda and um, the last comment I have is just as a reminder that when we looked at, when we look at the Board of Trustees agenda for the year, we will see that, uh, in several months, um, including for instance, April, um, and perhaps after that, there are places for closed session discussions of updates on audit findings. But we don't have any audit findings. And so we will not be looking for, uh, you know, the necessity for the committee to meet, to discuss those other things, yes, but not to discuss audit findings. Because we have.
And when will we meet again? I'm sorry. When will we meet again?
Uh, that's a good question. Um, President Flamer, we would have an, uh, our next quarterly audit. Ren, Ren, aren't you?
Matthews?
Yes.
Yeah. So we, we've scheduled, um, an, uh, ad hoc committee meeting for March second. Because we, we, we would like to have servitas, uh, present.
That's right. You're right. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so the answer question, your question is that the audit committee will meet on March second for a presentation with servitas regarding, uh, financing and construction of the, uh, residence hall dorms. So, and I, that meeting would probably be at noon, correct, President Flamer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so noon, March second will be our next meeting.
So that comes through us?
Yes.
Okay.
President Flamer had asked for us to hear a report from them.
Okay. Yes, I, I would like to have the boards audit committee, um, hear of the presentation from, from servitas prior to it, or at the same time it's being discussed with the foundation board, because of the board itself oversees the foundation.
Okay.
And we don't have anything to do with the trans. That's all ready to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Vice President Matthews. I apologize.
That's okay. So, um, we have no further business. Um, Cynthia, thank you for, uh, helping us, uh, just display the many pages of the report today.
My pleasure. And could I just note, I, I believe I have March ninth circled for the March board meeting. So would you?
You're right. It is March ninth. Because the March meeting was moved. That, that is what's on our calendar. So our, our committee meeting would be on March ninth at noon, prior to the board meeting. And Mr. Curry, thank you so much for joining us, um, and, uh, answering our questions, making the presentation. We're, we're very happy, of course, um, with the outcome, but also for appreciate your work. And, uh, not only the portal, but dealing with some delays unavoidable for us in getting information to you needed to finish the audit. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. And, uh, yeah, no, it's definitely, it was, it was a different year, but we got through it. So thank you again for everything. Appreciate it.
And Vice President Morrison, thank you for joining us today and, um, we will, we will see you again soon.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will, uh, adjourn the committee meeting and, um, see you all at one o'clock.